I'm gonna turn it off right now.
By the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a public hearing tonight on the proposed budget for 2010 and 2011. Our Sen's not here to read the budget, his message. Okay, go ahead, Carol, please.
Well, do you want to do that after you, before you close the public hearing, or?
Doesn't matter either way.
I think you had to close the public hearing first. Do you?
I don't know. Doesn't matter. It's all part of the budget.
Okay, I'll read it then. The following information provides an overview of the Village of Roses Point 2010-2011 municipal budget. The total appropriations of, there he is.
Earl?
So, I'll let him finish. I'll get him.
You gotta start with the first paragraph.
Worthwhile.
We're in the public hearing.
Read your budget message.
Total appropriation of uses for the 2010-2011 budget include enterprise funds is $9,570,165. An increase of $660,897 from the 2009-2010 budget adopted, primarily due to the capital projects funding of the E&amp;H Railroad Station Restoration Project. Under the general fund, this is where all this budget message is, an overview for people who don't understand what everything, what different funds are used for. So, the general fund is the principal operating fund and includes all operations not recorded but recorded and other funds. This includes police and fire services, public works, health, culture, recreation, home and community services, administrative services. Property tax levy for village purposes is $559,119, an increase of eight percent over the 2009-2010 budget levy of $517,179. This represents a 21 cent increase per $1,000 of assessed value. This is due to the state of the economy resulting in decrease in sales tax revenues, interest in investments, state aid, and rise in fixed costs. Property taxes, $559,119, make up forty percent of general fund revenues collectively, total of $1374,581. The remaining sixty percent of non-tax general fund revenues consist primarily of inter-fund transfers, sales tax distribution, state aid, court fines, investment income, and other revenues generated from fees from operating departments. The general fund appropriation and other uses is $2,148,152, which represents a two percent decrease from the 2009-2010 budget adopted. Major projects funded this fiscal year include paving for Soul Lane, Hinson Drive, and Beverly Drive at a cost of $40,000 to be completed by the Clint County Highway Department. The second half of Beachwood Drive Drain Project is funded at $22,200. New expenditures include $40,953 bond payment for work done inside the Civic Center, a $43,301 increase to the state retirement system, and a $12,700 increase for library operations. The village board slash paved and appropriated by $59,999 over the 2009-2010 budget adopted and eliminated the funding of a vacant police officer position and the savings of $51,456 to help keep property taxes from increasing more. The Civic Center is a special revenue fund used to account for operations of the village Civic Center. Ice time charges constitute the basic revenue of the Civic Center Fund. Other sources of revenues include rental, the concession stand, pro shop sales, intergovernmental charges, Town Champlain, advertising, and other facility charges. The hourly rate for ice time increases to $116 from $110, which compared to other local arenas remains low to what many skaters call the best ice in the North Country. The water fund is used to account for the operations of the village's water plant and distribution system. Water rents or rents to the public constitute the basic source of revenue for the water fund. Water rates for all non-meter residential and metered commercial customers will remain the same. An amendment to the industrial rate calculation has been adopted. Will not increase the industrial customer water bill based on the 2009-2010 usage billed. The sewer fund is used to account for the operations of the village's wastewater treatment plant and sanitary sewer system. Sewer charges or rents to the public constitute the basic source of revenues of the sewer fund. The basic rates for all sewer users will decrease. This is a 74 cents a month for residential customers. Meter customers will save 85 cents, and industrial customers 98 cents per unit, charged based on strength factors of 1.15 and 1.326 respectively. The library fund is used to record the transactions of the Dodge Memorial Library, supported in part by real property taxes. Other library revenues include library charges, fines, et cetera, intergovernmental charges, the SCCS School District, and the Town of Champlain, investment earnings, sale of books, gifts, donations, and library system grants. The library has sponsored many community programs since its operations began full-time last year. Additional funds of $12,700 from the general fund over the 2009-2010 budget adopted has been provided to continue to fund the library operations. That's because we used all the surplus in the library fund. Under the electric, the electric fund is an enterprise fund similar to those often found in the private sector. It is used to account for the operations of the village's municipal electric distribution system. Sale of electricity is the major source of revenue for the electric fund. The village's underground project continues with the funding of Church Street, $24,368. State Street Railroad tracks to Church Street, $9,755. Railroad crossing Chapman and Pratt, $102,000, and Phase Two of State Street, $89,000, for a total of $225,123. The capital project fund is used to account for the financial resources used for the acquisition or construction of major capital facilities, other than most financed by enterprise funds. This year's capital project fund accounts for the appropriations to finance the restoration of the E&amp;H Railroad Station to the museum at a cost of $927,500. Funding is provided by state and federal grants. The 2010-2011 budget is no-frills budget. The challenging economic climate affecting our nation, state, and local municipalities is reflected throughout this budget. Increases in fixed costs beyond our control, decreases revenues, and the status of the village's major employer can paint a very bleak picture of our finances. However, our budget is presented to maintain services that the village residents or taxpayers have come to expect from the Village of Roses Point. This time, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the village board, clerk, deputy treasurer, deputy clerk, and all department heads for their help and cooperation during this challenging budget process.
Thank you, our Sen. And if the board has opened, anybody who wants to discuss the 2010-2011 budget.
Robert O'Neill, if you watch them. I know the work that goes into a budget, and I've been thinking about this the other day, I opened a plant, and I had, we had forty people in our department. We're down to two. And they had determined that their both would be gone, and they made, there'd be nothing left in the apartment. And I'm calling upon the board, in good faith, to go readjust the budget to the last year's figure, in good faith. I'm not asking any particular item. Just wondering if you could cut that 21 cent increase and make it in level with last year's budget, great increase.
We didn't increase anything last year.
No, I'm back to last year's budget.
But I gotta tell you something, Robert.
I know, I know.
The last twelve years, there's been no increase in village taxes. And unfortunately, when the state sends you a bill of $60,000 more for retirement, or forty some odd thousand something, and that's just one little item.
Oh, I understand.
We come under the Public Service Commission for our rate review, $7,000 a year. Guess what it was this year? $81,000. You know, we just can't keep up with it. And this board worked very hard to trim this budget. There's nothing left to trim, Bob.
Well, I just ask you.
I mean, we don't like raising taxes. I'll tell you that.
No, I'm just saying, I'm scared of what's going on.
Well, so ain't anybody else.
And it bothers me when this is, I ask what's gonna happen, and what's gonna be all outsourced, Bob.
Biggest thing here is, is that as long as those buildings stand, we go collect the taxes. It's when they start putting the bulldozer through them that I have to start to really worry.
Or they go and change their evaluation, their assessment.
Well, they can't change anymore. They did already sue us three years ago for that. They got that. And they can't touch that now.
Well, I just, I just thought, the board.
No, it's, you know, and it was fully under.
I'm not particular, any particular item.
We fully understand, but we don't have anywhere to go with it now. We've done right down to the bare rock.
Well, I made my request.
Thank you, Robert. Anybody else? If not, I will close the public hearing, and if the board wishes, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt the budget. You'll make that motion.
Second?
Motion made, and seconded. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, roll call vote. Go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that I know Bob Hurt was part of the budget message, but the general fund appropriations and other uses, which includes transfers to capital project funds, reserve accounts, is $2,148,150, which is a two percent decrease from last year budget adopted.
The budget is actually lower than last year, but with the increases from the state approach to what they want, and the decreases of our revenues, that was called it.
I just, like I said, I wasn't affected on any particular item.
I just want to make one comment too, Bob. We talked about the budget, and we said, okay, we gotta make some cuts. Everybody took copies of the budget, and they went home, and they highlighted them, and they brought them back to the meeting. Ryan brought stuff to the table. Every department brought things to the table that we could reduce. So, we cut it a couple different times. We kept bringing it down a few times. Three times it was, never a different time.
It's the toughest budget we've ever had.
Oh, they're all tough.
This one was.
Well, I just, I just thought, and guess, I made a request.
Any other discussion? If, roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Dennis Roberts.
Aye.
And trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Okay, I open a, open a meeting to the public. Any comment from the public at this time on any subject? There being none, I'll close this, and you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting of April 5th. You all have copies. Is there any additions or deletions?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting of April 5th, 2010.
A second, Ed.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Roberts. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all who's in favor, vote by usual, send of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills, any additions or deletions?
Oh, yes, there is. There's one. Clint County Treasurer, the amount is $99. What it is, it's a refund of overpayment on 2009-2010 village taxes. When they paid the taxes, they'll return over to county for collection and pay his $99,000 to the village.
Oh, okay. Can I make a motion to accept the amendment to the bills?
Make a motion to pay the bills with the amendment.
With the amendment, excuse me. Make a motion to pay the bills.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Huckrow. Any discussion, board? If not, all who's in favor, vote by usual, send of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
Okay, the first item I have is a letter to the mayor, Rivers, and the village board. Please accept this as my resignation from the Roses Point Planning Board, effective May 1st, 2010. I have many other projects for the Historical Society, our village museum project, Fort Montgomery Days, and others that I need to be voting more time to, and I need to have more time for my family, friends, home, and most importantly, me. I have been planning on staying on until we voted on the Legion application and until our alternate had a chance to attend a few meetings to see how the board functions. Both of these should be accomplished by May 1st. I will stay on as an alternate for a while if you would like me to. I thank you for the opportunity to have served the village as a member of the planning board. It has been an eye-opening experience and, for the most part, was a good one. Sincerely yours, Jerry Faber.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept a deep regret for Jerry Faber. Thank him for service.
Can we tack onto that, then, with the representative alternate?
Yeah, well, they do anything till after May 1st anyway. Motion made by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Huckrow and Baker. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all who's in favor, vote by usual, send of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The next item I have is, dear mayor and trustees, please be advised that our annual election of officers held April 6th, 2010. The following members were elected by our membership to serve as chiefs until April of 2011. We submit their names for your approval. Chief Mike LeBlanc, First Assistant Chief Walt Laramie, Second Assistant Chief Junior Moore. Thank you for your consideration of these members. Dennis Roberts, secretary.
Move it. Second? Moved by trustee Huckrow, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all who's in favor, vote by usual, send of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The next item I have was addressed to the village clerk. As per Alcohol Beverage Control Law, Section 64109, it is our requirement to inform you of our intent to renew our liquor license. The liquor license serial number and bond number were listed. The term begins July 1st, 2009, and expires July 30th, 2010. And this was from Constantinos Raptis. It's Angelo's Pizza Grill. Just notification to me.
Information on my board.
And I did receive a letter in this afternoon. It's to, addressed to me that the American Legion Auxiliary of Roses Point would like the village of Roses Point to grant us permission to sell poppies. These poppies will be sold at different locations throughout the village. The employees at YF are one of our large contributors. Therefore, your permission would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your cooperation in serving this matter. It's from Ann Caddy, from the Roses Point American Legion Auxiliary.
I make a motion to let the auxiliary sell their poppies.
Second? Moved by trustee Baker, seconded by trustee Roberts. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all who's in favor, vote by usual, send of aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Carol. Report, mayor and the board of trustees. I have to appoint a delegate, an alternate delegate to the power advisory board. That wasn't brought up at our other meeting. I know. So, it's Michael Barnes the delegate, and Walt Laramie is the alternate. Need a motion on that.
Got it.
Second? Moved by trustee Huckrow, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all who's in favor, vote by usual, send of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Second thing on my agenda is the annual meeting of the New York Municipal Power Agency, May 27th, at NBC Suites in Syracuse. I'm already scheduled to go, but is there anybody else on the board who want to go? No. What? One day or two day? You go down one day and come back the next. All right, Carol, you make them reservations?
Want you approve it?
I'll make a motion to allow the mayor and trustee Baker to go to Syracuse for the municipal power.
Just to let you know. Because if you're gonna travel with me.
Go by your cell phone. I'm better off.
William?
I'll wait, I can. You gotta get on, Ron.
Yeah, I have, I go down Wednesday. No, I don't. I have a meeting at 3:30 Wednesday, so we go down Wednesday and come back Thursday.
I'll make a motion to allow the mayor and trustee Baker to go to the.
Well, excuse me, is it just approval for, he's already in, right?
Yeah, you.
Yeah, so it's just approval for trustee Baker.
Okay, so amend my motion to allow trustee Baker to attend the municipal power meeting in Syracuse on May 27th.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by multiple, trustee Roberts. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, I have a resolution. Whereas the board of trustees of the Village of Roses Point, New York, is a municipal member of the New York Municipal Power Agency, and whereas according to bylaws in the New York State Municipal Power Agency, each member may cast one vote on each transaction properly bought before this meeting. Now, therefore, be resolved to George A. Rivers will be hereby designated as the accredited delegate for the Village of Roses Point. This resolution should take effect immediately following a duly put to roll call vote.
I'll make that motion to allow the mayor to be the representative for municipal power electric, or, mean?
Second? Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Roll call vote. No, I'm sorry, any discussion? Roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Okay, our spring cleanup will commence on May 3rd, 2010, and will continue through Thursday, May 6th, of 2010. Residents are requested to bag as much material as possible and place it curbside by 7:30 a.m. In such a position so that pot cars and so forth do not block the pickup, pickup truck. This would greatly facilitate the collection. Residents are reminded that this collection is for picking up bag, bag, chippings, leaves, and brush and tree limbs not to exceed three inches in diameter only. This will be the last time the village crew will be picking up clippings and leaves and limbs until the fall pickup. The compost facility will be used for leaves and bag clippings only, no limbs. It's open, and it's running very well. I'm very pleased the way the residents have been taking care of it. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Mayor Rivers. The only thing I have on my agenda tonight is I'd like to remind the village residents that on Sunday, April 25th, the delicious Fireman's Breakfast will start at 8 o'clock till noon. So, we'd like everybody to come and support the fire department, and that's all I have on my agenda tonight, Mayor Rivers. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson, trustee Baker.
Okay, first, I have, I have a discussion. Is the waiver for the July 4th open container? I want permission to have that.
I think we, we made that motion last meeting, then we.
We received the information today, or, you know, you can either rescind the motion or.
Yeah, based on the information that I've received, I'm no longer in favor of that waiver.
I'd like to rescind the motion based on the information that we received from Tom Renean today, and also from Andre, the insurance company. I think to cover the cost of the waiver would be somewhere around $700. We don't understand any money. We don't have to right now. So, I'm gonna withdraw the motion. Rescind it, whatever.
I just want to remind the board, now, gotten this information. You know about it. The next time somebody wants to have a party down here and wants that open container law waiver, remember it.
So, are you trying to say that once we do this tonight, we're not gonna be able to do this anymore?
You'll leave, what's in front of you?
I read it, yeah, yeah. You recommend it, you know. It's pretty hard to go against a lawyer's recommendation.
Well, I think the difference in that is that if you're having a, if, if.
There's no difference.
I, I think there is, because with, with the Fourth of July, there's like nobody in charge. The village is basically in charge. We are taking responsibility. If I'm having a party down there, then that's my responsibility, because they're waiving it for me. If you're gonna do it for the Fourth of July, we as a village board are waiving it for us. I think that's where the difference in liability comes.
Well, I'm gonna, I'll put money on this, Dennis. The insurance company.
I wouldn't agree with that, Dennis. You either waive it or you don't. It doesn't make any difference if it's your favorite or your new, or if it's something for the entire village. I don't see the difference.
Liability is antithetical.
Right, I, I'm.
It's our property. Yep, it's our property.
Well, this is the reason the sportsmen's club was not interested in doing the beer tent this year, because they've never had a problem, and they knew that the more times you do something, the chances of having a problem are greater. So, they thought that's the same people doing the work, and they just get tired of that sort of.
So, you're saying that the parades going on, there's nobody allowed to have a beer on their front lawn?
Oh, they can have it on the front lawn.
It's our property.
But they can't bring it, like I'm saying, we had a band on Saturday night. We wouldn't waive it for that.
Oh, for that, yeah, yeah. They can't stop you from drinking on your own front lawn.
Or like, say, a few of them, yeah, those places, they just don't do it.
But what they can stop, are the people pulling up with a pickup truck, parking on a lakeside, and opening up a chest that had a beer, if the police want to do it. The other thing you gotta remember too this year, and if you have had a chance to talk to Mike Bingle, we're not gonna get the police coverage we've gotten in the past.
That's really, that's really the concern. I talked to Mike on Friday about this, and he was very concerned that we were gonna waive it for the grounds when he doesn't have the support from the sheriff's department.
Or the state police.
Or the state police, and that's really the concern.
Well, you know, the way I look at it, unfortunately, every good thing has its day. We have, you know, we have had a wonderful celebration for fifty, almost fifty years, or ninety. Actually, fifty, if you wanna count the.
This will be fifty.
If you counted the 350th anniversary of parade of 59, it would be fifty years over 50. But here and there, this whole country is nothing but soup raising.
Yeah, that's the issue.
But we're responsible, so when they can come back and sue us personally, but for being on the board, you know, that puts us in a bad spot.
Correct.
Anything else, Bumper?
Yeah, I got a couple more things.
You're gonna go second on that, mayor? Trustee Huckrow, rescinding the motion?
Yeah, second? Okay, the motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all who's in favor, vote by usual, send of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
All right, the next item I have, I think, is discussion, the use of the Civic Center for a D-Fand tour, bike tour.
Is this the same one we've had about a year, Carol?
No.
I didn't think so. I'm talking about the one in August.
No, this isn't the same one. This is a different one. That's a B&amp;B type bike.
Yeah, that's right.
In August that we've had in the past. This one is a major one.
Yeah, they're gonna start down at Glenn's Falls and come up through. That B&amp;B is Boston to Montreal.
Yep.
And back to Boston.
Well, I hope we can get on the circuit so that they come through the village.
Meet this right here?
No, no, but I'm saying, every year.
No, the B&amp;B takes alternate routes. Every other year, they come through here.
Oh, yeah.
And this one here is a company that just started this year. They're working with Lake Champlain Tourism or something, and I got, I got online the other day, and I got the map, and this is a major stop for them.
I think it's good for the village. You bring, what, a thousand people they said were gonna come?
I don't know. I know, they say up to two thousand, and they, and they turn around here if they want rooms for about 500 persons, in case of rain. Room for them, so they want to come inside.
We have a lot of B&amp;B inside here, and they stayed overnight. They actually went last year.
I think Mike's question was, is there a fee that, or do not, he, he thought maybe, because they're not gonna be actually using the facility, like, for a day or anything of the sort. Will you do one of the fee for that? Is there going to be a fee, or is it like, ask for a donation, or? I mean, they're gonna be using the facilities. They're gonna be, have garbage. They're gonna have, using electricity for the food.
There you go again. You don't know, you can't start making, I'm sorry.
You know.
Why don't we ask them for like a hundred or $200?
Mike, did we ask him? What's that? Mike, did we ask him? You got a manager of this place.
Well, he's, he's.
Let him set a fee.
Okay, that, that's what he wants to know. What do you want him to?
What do you think's fair? I mean.
We don't have to think. Let Mike take care of it.
Yeah, oh, okay. Well, I mean, I should probably give him some guidance.
The fees, the fees that the village charges, that kind of fees the village charges are set by the village board. And that's part, that's part of the budget process.
That's right. Five hundred bucks is five, is 500 bucks, right, our Sen?
Right, but they're not, they're not coming in and actually using the facility for, I mean, I don't know. I'm just.
You mean, they ain't gonna use the facility. They're going to do the bathrooms. They're gonna do this. They're gonna do that. Indoors, outdoors.
Indoors, outdoors, they're still using it. It's five hundred bucks, that's what I look at. That's what we adopted the law to.
It's the fees that we set, wife.
It is, and that's, that's the question.
Turn and run every time somebody shows? Well, let's go, move either a hundred bucks or somebody else have it for four.
It would be three fifty for nonprofit, this is nonprofit.
Wanna start that? Oh, shit, why the quit? What do you recommend?
A hundred dollars?
No, Bumper, it would be three fifty because it's nonprofit.
It's nonprofit, okay, three fifty, that's fine. That's fine.
I mean, it is a big event, but we can't be, and that's what you mean.
Right, yes.
You're gonna, they, they plan on hiring, they're looking at bringing in some, hopefully some students, or some kind of a sports group or association, they're, they're willing to pay these young students, like, eight dollars an hour, to be runners. I mean, they're gonna be busy and running, and they, they need that many people to help accommodate.
Did you read this? It says, "We request your municipality a loan of your indoor or outdoor facilities at the civic center on Thursday, August twelfth. If necessary, our organization will pay for human resources, and they'll pay for our people being here." Three hundred fifty dollars.
So those...
End of conversation.
There you go.
That's it.
If we don't follow rules that we set, why set them? If we don't follow what we set, then why set them?
Exactly. I'm over the thousand people come here, some of those people will come back, you know?
Well, that, that's just it. They all have the fifty dollars to use, I mean, you know, as long as it's not the last dollar.
Okay, so it's set, you don't have to worry about it.
So go with the, the three hundred fifty dollar fee.
From the data.
Okay.
Then I request an executive session to discuss public works, works personnel.
Second. Move by trustee Baker, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Thank you, trustee Baker. Uh, trustee Roberts.
Mayor, first of all, I'd like to make a motion to allow Scott Bayshard to attend a training in Saratoga Springs on May twenty-fifth and twenty-ninth. This is teaching officers to see the crime scene, the art of perception training.
Second. Move by trustee Roberts, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The second item is I'd like to authorize Hert to publish a legal notice for a public hearing to amend the sewer rates.
Second.
That'll be at the next meeting.
Yeah. Uh, move by trustee Roberts, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Next on my agenda is I'd like to make a brief update on the library. I didn't realize how active that library was until I read the report. They are extremely active, and we have a huge increase in the usage over the last year, such as books, DVDs, and computer usage. They held an egg hunt on March twenty-seventh with around a hundred and twenty-five people attending. They provide numerous sources, computer classes, book delivery to the senior housing, tutoring services, these are all services I didn't even, even know that they provided. But in, in April, they're gonna have an art show at the St. Patrick's Church Hall on twenty-fourth, April twenty-fourth. There's a music club meeting on the twenty-seventh, storytime on the twenty-eighth, and book club meeting on the twenty-ninth. Just FYI, that monthly calendar of events is located on the village website, so people will be... The last thing I'd like to report on is every year, we have an annual audit of the justice court records by the treasurer, and court records are in excellent condition, excellent audit, and control procedures are in place. The court clerk is commended for an excellent job in record keeping. The records of Justice LaBouny and Justice Pavil have been reviewed and appear to be satisfactory. Do I, Marson, infer a prayer?
Do we have to accept that? Is a motion? No?
Yeah, I know, it has to be read into a minutes, which Hert just did, so.
Okay.
I only have to do something with it, I'm sure. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, trustee Roberts, trustee Huckrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items. First is a request for authorization for Kim Bennett, John Bernard, and Adam Bernard to attend training for a competent person for trenching excavation confined space training on July twenty-seventh, 2010, in Plasburg. Put that forward, motion.
Second. Move by trustee Huckrow, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion?